We will, uh, we'll get ready to come to order just a moment. Uh, it's six o'clock when we're ready to go live with our, uh, streaming tonight. So, um, just another half a minute or so and we'll be ready to call our meeting to order. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and it is six o'clock and we called to order the January two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. And let us on behalf of the board, uh, say happy new year to each one of you. Uh, hopefully I've, I've been sending some of those messages out saying a happier new year and I, I hope that it is. I hope the virus starts waning and the vaccines start working and we won't have any elections this year and hopefully we'll have a, a better year. And I, I also said to, to one of my neighbors, um, in spite of all that's gone on, I, I can't say that two thousand twenty was, was such a bad year. Uh, I think we had, still have many things to be thankful for, still have many blessings and, uh, we give thanks for all of our blessings and, uh, we're so grateful to have each one of you here tonight to participate, uh, in our, in our meeting. And, um, I know we have several who are going to, going to participate in various parts of our agenda t- tonight. Um, and I, I want to do, we're going to do some recognitions here in a moment, so I'll, I'll save those till we have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. So, um, with us tonight is Representative Allen McNeil, who's going to be sworn into office for his next term, and I've asked Allen to do our invocation tonight. So if you'll please stand and then we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Lord, precious heavenly Father, from whom all blessings flow, we pray, dear Lord, that we can be more thankful that two thousand twenty-one will be a time of reflection for us each and every day, that we can look and think on, thank you, dear Lord, for the many blessings that you've bestowed on us each and every day, with the sunshine and the rain, dear Lord, and fresh air and water. I pray, dear Lord, that you would just, uh, help us to be stewards of the things that you have given us. Dear Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight. I pray, dear Lord, that you would bless the commissioners as they do business for the people of Randolph County. I pray that you would give them wisdom in all the decisions that, that they need to make. Dear Lord, selfishly, I ask for your help this year as I go into another session of the North Carolina General Assembly. I pray also, dear Lord, that you would give me wisdom in the many things that, uh, we face and the many decisions that, that I must make. Dear Lord, uh, for each and every person here who has a friend or a family member or an acquaintance or someone that we don't even know, dear Lord, and has COVID, uh, I pray that you would just touch that body right now, that you would heal them. For the many families that have already lost loved ones to COVID, I pray that you would just give us a special comfort to that family now. And dear Lord, we just pray that as two thousand twenty-one, as this vaccine gets rolled out, that this will put an end to this, uh, pandemic, this disease that we've had that has caused so much pain and suffering and heartache in two thousand twenty. Dear Lord, again, just bless this meeting tonight and, dear Lord, thank you for sending your son to die for our sins. We pray and ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Allen.
May the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Uh, I will make a couple of notations relative to our agenda. Um, notice our county attorney, Ben Morgan, is not with us tonight. Uh, Ben notified us this morning that his, uh, his wife and two of his sons are, are home with the Corona, the cor- the coronavirus and, um, we want to remember them. Also, Bob McDuffie, who was to be recognized tonight for his thirty-four years of service on the Water Authority, called this morning also to say that he'd been exposed and was quarantined and would not be able to, to join us tonight. So we, uh, make those notations. Uh, just as an aside, uh, I know all of us, I've become more and more familiar with folks that, uh, have the virus and are going through all the protocols and the quarantines. I, I worked a funeral just today for a longtime family friend and his two sons were not able to attend their father's funeral because they were home with the virus. So it affects so many lives and especially at times like that when they're grieving and loo- saying their goodbyes to, to a parent especially and, uh, not able to attend. So we want to thank and, and be remembering those folks also. But we do have several folks I do want to mention in attendance tonight for various reasons. Uh, we have State Senator Dave Craven with us and, uh, Representative Pat Hurley is with us tonight. Our district attorney, Andy Gregson's here. Pam Hill, our clerk of court, is with us and her better half or, or her other half, uh, Judge Jimmy Hill's going to end, going to present, do the swearing in for Representative McNeil that, uh, that he's mentioned. So, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Proten, uh, is with us tonight from Marchdale. Louis Dorsett and Orsted City Manager, Zeb Holden, is with us tonight. So, and others that are going to be a part of our, uh, our agenda and presentations tonight. So all of you, thank you for being here tonight and those that are watching at home or Facebook or YouTube, whatever, uh, we thank all of you for, for being, your patience and for coming in, participating in our meetings in this fashion. Um, we hope that two thousand twenty-one gives us an opportunity to open this room up so that we have seats for all who want to come and participate in county government. But thank you for your presentation, for your, uh, presentations and for your attendance here tonight. So with that, um, we're going to do the swearing in. So Judge Hill and Representative McNeil, you want to come forward at this time? And whome- whomever you have with you, Allen.
It's got to take down. Is there enough room to do that here?
Sure. Thank you. That's okay. Mr. Chair and members of the commission, it's good to see you. Happy new year to you and to yours and a safe year to you and to yours. And I want to thank you for accommodating to swear in. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could take one personal privilege before we go further, I want you to know that Representative McNeil had the opportunity to be sworn in on the floor of the House of Representatives, but because of COVID restrictions, it's my understanding that he would not be able to have anyone with him during that swearing in on the floor. So he has chosen to do a swearing in here at home with his family around him, which speaks very much to what's important to Allen McNeil. Uh, for those of you like me who may have called him from time to time while the legislature's been in session, I know that you've received a return call from him. I'm just not sure exactly from where that call may have come. It may have come from just off the floor of the house, may have come from his office, may have come from his car, or it may have come after a long day at the assembly after ten, after ten P. M. or so, when he's finally been able to take up position in one of his, of his favorite possessions, his easy chair and his travel trailer at the fairgrounds. But if you ask him a question of which there's an answer, he'll find that answer for you. He's always straight about his positions on issues and also about the reasons for those positions and he values his work. Allen's constituents of his district are very fortunate to have a representative that remains as committed today to their interests and to his responsibilities as he was when he first took office. And with that being said, I want to wish you Godspeed in this new term, sir, and I also want to say thank you for the privilege of being able to administer the oath. And sir, if you would like to come forward and bring with you your guest? And sir, if you would like to introduce your honored guest?
I will. Uh, I will take the mask off for just a minute for this. This is my father, Allen McNeil, also, uh, Alan River McNeil. I'm Alan Ray McNeil. This is my wife, Pat. My dad's ninety years old, be ninety-one in April, and it's an honor for me to be here, for him to be here for me and my wife. And, uh, so, uh, that's, that's who they are.
Very well. Welcome. And sir, are you prepared to take the oath?
I am.
All right. If you'd be kind enough to repeat after me. I, Allen McNeil.
I, Allen McNeil.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And will bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to?
And to.
The constitutional powers and authorities.
The constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are?
Which are?
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Endeavor?
Endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with?
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best?
To the best.
Of my knowledge and ability.
Of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Allen McNeil?
I, Allen McNeil.
Do swear?
Do swear.
That I will well and truly?
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties?
Execute the duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of a member?
Of a member.
Of the North Carolina House of Representatives.
Of the North Carolina House of Representatives.
According to the best?
According to the best.
Of my skill and ability?
Of my skill and ability.
According to law?
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Just a few thank yous really quick. Thanks to my dad and my wife for coming and assisting me in the oath. Thanks to Judge Hill, uh, my friend, Judge Hill, for agreeing to swear me in. Thanks to Hal Johnson for helping me arrange this and the commissioners for allowing me to be sworn in. Uh, I was reminiscing with Hal about how I started to work for Randolph County Sheriff's Office in nineteen seventy-seven in an old jail that sit just right across the, the driveway here and how I brought many of prisoners up through these back elevator and these back stairs, uh, to this courthouse here, when this was actually a courthouse. And, uh, now, what is that, forty-some years later, I'm standing here in this same building being sworn in for my fifth term in the North Carolina Legislature. Who would have thought? I, I've been truly blessed in my life and I owe it all to God, who has directed my paths in a lot of different ways. But I also owe it to a lot of people that are sitting in this room and I won't start naming people because I'm sure I would miss somebody. But a lot of these people have been mentors and friends and advice, giving them advice through the years and I appreciate each and every one of you. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to be sworn in today. Thank each and every one of you. And I covet your prayers as I go to trial. Uh, please pray, it's not an easy place, uh, and we have a lot of important decisions to make and a lot of important work and I covet your prayers and thank you again. Thank you, Allen. Thank you for, uh, offering your services to the citizens of this county again. Our other representatives that are here tonight, thank you for your representation as well. And I'll tell all of you and all the public citizens of this county, our representatives are, uh, very accessible and been here at the, the COVID, the hospital, all these issues that we faced this year and they are, uh, literally no more than one phone call or a text or something away and, and quick to respond to the needs of this county. And I just can't say enough about, uh, not just our representatives, they're our friends and as Allen pointed out, I know when I first came on this board, I rode with him and Lichard Hurley from, uh, at night, from seven at night to seven in the morning and some of the things that go on and that's, that's how they got started in this county is, uh, working a beat, you might say, in the middle of the night when we're home, safe in our houses and resting. But, uh, just thank all of you for your service to the county and all of you elected officials who, who offer yourself and, and represent the citizens of our county. So thank you very much and glad we could do it in this fashion too, Allen. Uh, I think that's special for us. Okay, uh, we'll mention also, we had a recognition for Davy Garner with the sheriff's office. That too, uh, is being removed from the agenda. There's, uh, sickness or a doctor's form or something there that, that prevented his being here as well. So both of those other recognitions for Bob McDuffie and for Davy Garner will be brought back to, uh, to the county commissioners meeting in February. I think that's February the first at six o'clock and it'll be at the start of the meeting just as it would have been tonight. So thank all of you for that. We do have a presentation on our four H student achievements. Um, Allison Walker is here to present tonight.
Thank you for letting me be here. Um, we just wanted to recognize the achievements of our four Hers at the unofficial state fair this year or in two thousand twenty. We had the state youth livestock shows to go on and these youth worked really hard in two thousand twenty with their livestock projects and we wanted to recognize them tonight. Unfortunately, you know, they couldn't be here because of the COVID, but they are watching on Facebook tonight. Um, we had Cassidy Sharp and her sister Brooklyn Sharp that won grand and reserve champion for the youth market turkey show. So they are sisters from Randleman and they were able to stand together side by side and get first and second place. So we're so proud of them. We also had forty-four other Randolph County four H youth that showed turkeys. They received the turkeys in June and they raised them until the fair. Um, and then our other, I'm going to pull it up so I don't misspeak here. Uh, the inaugural Got to Be North Carolina Futurity Show was held this past October as well. Caroline Scarlett won grand champion for the goat, or for goats with her doe Twizzler, who was bred by Payson Kane, who is a former Randolph County four H-er and he is now raising livestock. He has cane livestock in Coal Ridge. So we're so proud of the two of them for that accomplishment. Twizzler was purchased through the Got to Be NC Futurity Sale in the spring and then she was shown at the state fair and she won the championship. So Caroline and Payson got special recognition for that and prize money. Uh, Caroline Scarlett also won grand champion senior commercial doe. Albie Pulaski from Trinity won Got to Be NC grand champion for senior doe and her sister Josie Pulaski won the Got to Be NC Reserve Grand Champion. She was showing a doe raised by Riley Schofield. So we're so proud of these youth and all of our other four H-ers and, uh, thank you for letting me be here tonight and we're thankful for your support of Randolph County four H. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Good job. Okay, next item on our agenda is our public comment period and, uh, since our attorney, Mr. Morgan, is not here, I want to ask Hal to, uh, read the rules for our public hearing, public comment period tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rules of procedure for the public comment period, uh, is limited to fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name, both orally and in writing before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes and our clerk to the board will, will time, keep the time. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. The response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Thank you, Hal. All right. I'm clerk.
Janet Pate? My name is Janet Pate. I live at thirty-nine oh-one Hillsdale Park Drive in Sophia. The last commissioner meeting, a request, request was made to move a nomination for the Randolph Health Board from the consent agenda to discuss separately. Much of the board denied requests from a fellow member to discuss the nomination, which results in disrespect of concerns from an equal member. Why? Under the rules of procedure, Rule Eight, Item D, states that routine agenda items may be designated under a section of the agenda called consent agenda and will be approved in one motion without discussion. Upon request by any one board member, any item listed under the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Why was that not followed? After backlash of a rant made by this appointee on social media, a comment from a board member was made on the same social media platform that which we should have diversity in our county and on these board appointments in which taxpayers do not vote for. These appointments make recommendations to the commissioners based on research and knowledge of the prospective board they are voted to be a part of. Diversity, equity, equality is being used that as an excuse to push unconstitutional recommendations to the American people. There is no such thing as equality because no two people are or even will be equal. We all bring different attributes to the table. These attributes are not to interfere with one's individual liberties, which constitutes an unconstitutional act if those individual liberties are denied. Diversity is offering differing ideas. Taking away one's different ideas and demanding the removal of an individual freedom is communism. Certainly, this appointee is guaranteed his First Amendment right, but it does not reflect the same as the majority of Randolph County and certainly not constitutional. This type of communist thinking does not belong a part of our boards. An unconstitutional act is no law, null and void from its enactment and no one is bound to enforce it.
Ms. Pate, you have thirty seconds.
Sixteen abjure prudence. Then a constitution should receive a literal interpretation in favor of the citizen is especially true with respect to those provisions which were designed to safeguard the liberty and security of the citizen in regard to person and property. For any nominated member of any board that negatively affects the American citizen's right of liberty and security of a person or property is unconstitutional and an enemy of America.
Ms. Pate, your time is up.
Okay. Can I hear the rest of what she has? Does she have anything else? Janet, I don't, there was an item pulled from the consent agenda and was discussed and voted on separately. It was pulled off at, at the request of Commissioner Kenny Kidd.
Okay.
So that's, that's not a correct statement. Can, can I ask if she can finish?
Sure. Okay. This virus was released to the world by the China Communist Party. It's an attack on the Western civilization, capitalism, and the Constitution of the United States. The entire purpose of the attack is for our constitution and economy to be destroyed and communism take over. The layman definition of capitalism is the economic system in which people and businesses engage in manufacturing, trading, and exchanging products and services without government interference. A free market capitalist system works in more efficient manner when not tampered with by government or central bank intervention in the credit markets, monetary policy, and interest rate fixing. More and more over the years, local governments have placed more regulations hindering the free market, which is an attack on individual freedom. An example is the unconstitutional act that is currently occurring in closing of businesses or restricting their hours of operation and how they conduct their businesses. To suggest that any citizen to do something that goes against our individual freedom that includes denying them of services, the ability to move about freely, buy, sell, or trade is unconstitutional and attack on individual freedom. To merely suggest citizens to have their bodies injected with a substance or be denied individual freedoms are unconstitutional. You as elected officials are bound by our constitution to adhere to the document. Anything suggested otherwise is anti-American. Nowhere in the listed responsibilities for a county commissioner states that the board regulates and makes decisions for a citizen's health. I am asking the Board of Commissioners to add the discussion to the agenda of the appointment of Mr. Ferguson in the Randolph County Health Board and remove him due to his comments relating to the attack on our individual freedoms. This is not a conservative, liberal, Republican, or Democrat issue. This is an attack on our individual freedoms and the constitution. And also I have included Mr. Ferguson's rant that was on social media as a part of this and will give to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Janet, I, I, and not just for your comments, but for all, all of these folks here at home or wherever, this board is not imposed any restrictions on anybody. We haven't closed any business. The only thing has been whatever was done by the governor of North Carolina.
Which is unconstitutional.
And we can't, we can't do less than what he does. We can do more, but we haven't done anything other than whatever the governor of North Carolina has imposed on the citizens of this state.
Which is unconstitutional. But I also would like to say that anyone who are, is appointed to these boards make recommendations, we do not vote for these people. And when these people make comments and rants such as an unconstitutional issue as he was doing, and frankly, it was bad, um, it needs to be discussed and it needs to be removed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Palmer?
Good evening. I know most of you all know me, but for the record, my name is Bill Palmer, resident here in Randolph County. The reason I'm here tonight.
Mr. Palmer, will you raise your microphone just a bit? Thank you.
I'm a little tall.
Yes.
The reason I'm here tonight is I'm the elected president of a organization that started in Randolph County in May of two thousand nineteen. And it started out as Friends of the Randolph County Sheriff's Office. We began establishing our mission in two thousand nineteen to lend support to the Randolph County Sheriff's Office, law enforcement officers, staff, and their families. We later realized in January of two thousand twenty that these individuals also work in tandem with other public safety organizations in Randolph County. So we therefore began to include police officers, firefighters, emergency medical personnel, and the like of those in the teams that we support. We're an organization operating exclusively as a volunteer nonprofit organization under the federal and state guidelines of a five oh one three C corporation. Uh, we operate under all the regulatory guidelines and compliance. We operate under all the regulatory guidelines and compliance with the requirements as required by Board of Directors. Through the help of volunteers, we communicate to the community the needs of our public service entities about the special needs within. As part of our goal, we provide and implement direct financial assistance for the purchases of certain special needed items of equipment that's beneficial in the aid and sometimes to enhance direct departmental support, serving the various departments throughout Randolph County. We have held fundraisers, we've held raffles, we even hosted a barbecue that I'm sure everyone's familiar with, and we have received other generous donations throughout Randolph County. Since our establishment, we have, we funded the purchase of the granite monument memorial to the fallen officers at the Randolph County Sheriff's Department that I'm sure you've all seen that's outside the Sheriff's Department. We funded that. We also have purchased a fully trained K-9 for the Randolph County Sheriff's Office SRO Division.
Mr. Palmer, you have thirty seconds.
Ooh. We purchased protective vest and gear for the K-9s, given by donate, given by donors. We have funded some of the K-9 living quarters. We also have purchased for one of the volunteer fire departments in Randolph County, a very vital piece of equipment that they otherwise could not purchase. We funded that. We have funded the purchase of a mobile grill and utensils to assist with hot meals for the first responders during the event of any civil disaster, weather events, where they cannot go home for meal.
I didn't let, go ahead and wrap up. You go ahead.
We have also funded a very expensive analytical piece of equipment for the Sheriff's Department's maintenance facility. We most recently became aware from Lieutenant Eric Wilson, the urgent need of some specialty gear for the Special Ops Division of the Sheriff's Department that comprised of a number of volunteers, I believe it was twenty-one. And they were in dire need of coats and boots in the field that they just, just didn't have and needed. So at our last board meeting, we elected to fund this for the Sheriff's Department, six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents for the purchase of these items for the Special Op. And I have with me a check made out to Randolph County, North Carolina, earmarked for the Sheriff's Department, SRT.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Yates.
All right. Hello, commissioners. I am, I was last minute thrown into this. Someone else was going to speak and then they couldn't come, so they asked me to because we had had long discussions about this. My name is Beth Yates. I live at ten-twelve Iron Mountain View Road. I'm a fourth generation Randolph County resident. Actually, we've always, all four generations have lived on the same road. But this is why I embarrassingly have not been very involved with the local government. But a friend of mine shared something on Facebook on December the thirteenth, and I just, I felt moved to, Janet touched a little bit on the rant, and I feel like the people here, I'm not going to say who posted it, well, we already know who did it. This was Mr. Ferguson's post on December the thirteenth. These are from my original screenshots. These are not something that was somebody shared on Facebook. These were my personal screenshots of what he was on his Facebook. It said, "With the beginning of the arrival of effective vaccines, we finally," sorry, I'm over forty now. "We finally have some good news regarding the coronavirus vaccine. Not only do these promise to control the virus, but their development represents a monumental triumph for science, rationality, and international cooperation. The record-paced development of the vaccines is a triumph in heroic proportions for humanity." I apologize, I probably misread that. "The success is nothing less than a demonstration of the best that we are capable of." And I think everyone is, is on board for that part. It was a great opening statement from him, but then there's a turn. It says, "For the first time, I feel sorry for the anti-vax, anti-science crowd with a few months," I'm sorry, that was a sentence, "within a few months, they will each face a personal reckoning when the inevitable phone app appears certifying that the owner of the iPhone is vaccinated. You will be needing that app to gain admission into a number of businesses and facilities. Airports immediately come to mind, as do schools, courthouses, and municipal buildings. Businesses will likely have to confirm to their liability insurance carriers that they are requiring that the app be shown by customers before entering. So you will likely need to get it into a grocery store, for example." So with, so each of us will have the choice of either participating in this gargantuan effort to protect the public health or not. If you choose not to do so, that will be your right, but the world that you are permitted to enter will quickly, I'm sorry, will likely quickly become a much smaller place for you and the remainder of the unvaccinated. I'll stand heartily peasant immune, I'm sorry, there's a little singular error. I'll stand my hearty peasant immune system up against anyone's, but when my cohort is called to take the shot, I will be ready and proud and happy to do so. I'm a business owner. It is none of my business what my, what people have put in their bodies. It's not, that should scare everyone. I mean, that's what they do in communist countries, where, you know, you're not allowed to move freely because, you know, you chose to have a vaccine or not have a vaccine. And I've not made that decision personally for myself, and even if I do have it, it's no one's business. And just the fact, it just brings chills down my spine that, and I'm not saying that any of the commissioners had any inkling that this was his, these were his feelings on this when you voted him in. I would like to think not. Being that Randolph County is, you know, over three-quarters Republican, and we vote in commissioners that we feel are also Republican, I would feel that when you make these appointments, that they would reflect the people that voted you in. So, and like I said, I don't think that you guys were aware of that, but I think it's definitely something that needs to be addressed, is something that needs to be talked about, especially being that he is on a health board that makes policies for Randolph County. Like I said, I don't think there's been a lot of attention to this, but I think there's going to be a lot in the future because I know Fox Eight has posted something, that there were people talking about doing an app. It's just insanity. And if the stand has to start here in Randolph County that, you know, hey, that's unconstitutional, we're not doing it, then it'll start here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beth.
Beth, Beth, if you did not know it, the board of health meets the second Monday night of every other month, beginning in January.
Okay.
And it is a public meeting.
Okay.
And so those meetings are on the website, but you also, even though they are not in person right now.
Okay.
You can get the link, you can listen to everything that goes on, you can also speak in a public comment period, and so I feel sure that they would appreciate your feedback, that they would appreciate your interest in what's being done. It's been very informative to me. I have understood a lot of things that I would not otherwise understand if I had not been there and heard what we're facing and how it's impacting the services we provide our citizens. So I don't make any judgment on what we would have, could have, should have done. I'm glad we didn't have to make those calls. I just say that each person be careful, take care of yourself, take care of the people you love, because it's a mess out there right now. But I would suggest that with the passion and the interest you have, that you, that you tune in and that you look, that you watch those meetings.
Oh, yeah, I definitely am planning on being more active and just involved, just saying, keeping up to date.
Sure.
With what's going on.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right.
Larry Cheek.
Good evening. My name is Larry Cheek, sixty-four hundred Highway twenty-two Ramsore. I'm here for the exact same reason as those other two ladies. Had no idea who this individual was, other than you guys voted him in at the last meeting, until someone shared that post with me and like Beth. I mean, it ran all over me and everybody I shared it with in a major way. At the last meeting, one of you guys, which I said, you know, with this pandemic, we're frustrated and we're just don't know what to do, but we've got to do something. And some, that's not the answer, guys. I mean, an appointment like this on the board, if this man's, if this man's posts that he put up on social media for the world to see are his sentiments, I do not want him on Randolph County's health board. That is a policymaking board. Like Janet pointed out in the reply that one of you put up, was a long, kind of a long summary of what appointments are and what they do and that kind of thing. It was said that diversity is needed on boards, but we're in Randolph County, so the first thing that comes to mind, what the analogy that I thought of, I mean, most of us go to church here, but this is not diversity. This is like putting an atheist on your deacon board, because the core beliefs and values are such a departure from anything anybody I know believes. And it's not a conservative Democrat issue. It is, it's an issue of choice, and we're in America, and do we have choice? It's not even an issue about a vaccine. This is a slippery slope. If, if this could be put into place that this is required, then this type of education could be required to even get a job. I mean, it's, it just goes down the line. So like Janet, I think there should be a discussion about maybe this was not properly vetted, and you guys were as caught, as surprised as we were when we saw this. But I think there definitely needs to be a discussion about it and not just, you know, go to the health board meetings and see what comes out, comes of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cheek. Thank you very much.
Sarah Cheek.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Cheek, and my husband just gave you our address. I live in Randolph County. And I don't want to be redundant, so I won't repeat the things that Beth said or Larry or Janet, but I'll just share with you my experience a little bit. Last month was the first time I've ever engaged in any kind of, of local government or, or anything. I brought my children here. I was really excited. We homeschool, and I wanted them to, to be present for the meeting, and we actually, we went home and began to dig in a little bit on the website and start reading a little bit more about how we could be doing our civic duty. And, and, you know, I'm excited to do that. But I left here really dismayed by comments that were made by Mr. Allen. I was really kind of discouraged to hear, this is almost verbatim, when you did say we're in a pandemic and we're all frustrated and we're all desperate, was the word that was used, we have to do something. And it really concerned me. My children and I are learning logic and, and we talk a lot about good decision-making, and it really concerned me that these are how the decisions are being made here, because we're frustrated and we're desperate and we have to do something. I don't, I don't know what to say beyond that, you know, in regards to that, but, but I do know that clearly that's not how we should be making our decisions right now. The appointment of Mr. Allen was, was challenged, and, and from my perspective, just as a person who's never been to meetings like this, my perspective was that all of the concerns that were raised by Mr. Kidd were really just dismissed, just dismissed as irrelevant. He questioned how well Mr. Allen, or Mr. Ferguson had been vetted and who, who was it that nominated him, and all of his concerns were brushed off. It was later in that week that we saw the post by Mr. Ferguson. That is really distressing, his words. He treated completely, he was completely cavalier about the idea that a good portion of the citizens of Randolph County, if they don't accept a vaccine or, or whatever it might be, he was completely cavalier about the fact that, yeah, they might be excluded from businesses, they may not be able to buy food for their families in the future. That's okay with me. That was kind of the, the feeling of his post on Facebook. And I'm also concerned by the fact that he did not have, he was not judicious with his words, that he would post, he was just appointed to one of our boards, and he would go on Facebook and he would post something like that and think that's okay. And I don't know if any of you are aware of this, but since then, he's not only removed that post because he received so much pushback, he's removed every other post that might be offensive to people. He's completely closed down his page, and I think that was probably wise, but it's, I don't think that that says very much for his sentiments. And I'm sure that although he's removed those posts, he still maintains those same sentiments, those same beliefs. So I just wanted to share with you how disturbing that was for me. That was my, my first time coming in here and seeing all of you, and thank you. I know that the job you do is very difficult, and I know you probably have constant pressure from different directions, and, and with the Lord's help and, and good counsel, you do the best you can to make, make good decisions. But, but I just had to speak out on this, and I hope that you'll hear the concerns that, that myself and that others have had, and I hope there will be action taken. I don't think it's satisfying to hear, just come to the health, what you said to Beth, you know, just come to those meetings and you'll be heard. We are extremely concerned by his appointment. I, I don't personally think that, just by seeing that his sentiments on Facebook and the things he posted, I don't see how he has any business on that board. That, that seems to me incredibly unwise that he would, would post all of that, knowing that that's a public forum, and, and that's, that's there for everyone to see. So I hope that you'll take seriously all of the concerns that have been raised. And again, thank you for what you do. Thank you.
And if I would just say, I had not seen it, so I have taken the, sorry, I'm sorry. I had not seen it, so I have taken the time to read it. As Chairman Frye pointed out, this is not Randolph County. Okay, these comments are apparently, you know, what he thinks, you know, may happen, I don't know, different countries, maybe national level, I don't know. I, I don't know.
Well, like.
But this is Randolph County, and we do not even have a mask mandate here.
Well, that's right. I'm really glad to hear you say that. Thank you.
So please don't be confused thinking that this is something that's going to be pushed on Randolph County. I can assure you that the only thing we passed last time was a resolution that supports what's been in place so far, wearing your mask, waiting six feet apart, washing your hands, doing those things that we know help deter the spread of the virus.
Absolutely, and, and I think that everyone here does understand that, that he was not speaking for your, for this board or this, this group. He, he wasn't speaking for Randolph County, but he was speaking for himself. He was expressing how he feels, and I think that we can, can gauge pretty well where he stands on that, just based on his statements, just for himself. And I hope that you all will look at that and maybe consider much more seriously how you vet these appointees later. This is, there was another post made by Commissioner Allen where you did say that, you know, these are not policymaking board, you know, we make appointments, and the gist I got from it, my understanding was that you were saying that most of these appointments are not to policymaking boards. If I'm wrong, I might be wrong about this, but isn't that board a policymaking board that he was just appointed to?
It is an independent board.
Does that mean that that board makes policy? It's an independent board, yes.
Yes.
What I was referring to.
What I was referring to, a lot of what we, our advisory boards, like the Volunteer Ag district, or those kinds of things.
I, I understand, and I just-
It's a mixture.
It seemed that it was connected to that recent appointment, the comments that you made, that's the reason it was a bit confusing. But I just, I just hope that you all will, will really take this under advisement and think about, and think about that when you do make appointments, that they are very carefully vetted, because social media is crazy. You just, your whole life is out there for everybody, and it's really easy to find out how people think, you know, and, and what their views are, if they have a Facebook page or something like that, it's pretty easy to go on there and see. And, and I know for myself, and, and the people that I know, I know I don't know everybody in Randolph County, but I do know from the Courier Tribune what they posted about our voting record, which is that about seventy-five percent of the time, Randolph County votes conservatively. We vote for the people with the R after their name, and, and we are a Christian conservative community, just from my experience. So it's, it would be nice to know that you're making appointments that you know are going to represent us well, and, and accurately. That's really all I had to say. Thank you.
I will, I will say for you and the public, the health board appoints the health director. We don't. The health, the health director-
That's a lot of power.
Yeah.
That's a lot of power. To answer that question.
Yeah.
And a policymaking board by North Carolina general statute, so they actually hold a lot of power in North Carolina.
So that's even more concerning, right, to me? I, I really thank you for listening, and, and I, I hope you, you do know, we, I'm really thankful for what you all do, and, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to come and speak to you. I know that, I know that it is difficult, what you do. I know it is difficult. It's not easy, and, and you must get tons of flack all the time, from all directions, and I, I can really sympathize with that. So, and, again, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank all of you for your input tonight, your public comments, and yes, we did go a little bit over in our time, and, but, that's, that's pretty typical of how we do. We, we don't try to, we don't try to squelch any comments that come before us, and I think they're important either way. And we thank all of you for participating tonight, and, at any time. So with that, we do have a consent agenda, and I will say, we have one appointment on this consent agenda. It is Mr. Dennis Mabe. We have a very detailed resume on Mr. Mabe. I want to say, he, as I mentioned at the start of our meeting, he is recommended to replace Bob McDuffie on the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority Board. Nobody has ever represented this county, defended this county, looked after this county like Bob McDuffie has for thirty-four years. Some of my comments, he's, he's the longest-serving board appointee in the history of this county. And for those of you who might not know, Mr. McDuffie was CEO, present CEO of Randolph Electric, which is a public utility. And Mr. Mabe was hired by Mr. McDuffie while he was the CEO of Randolph Electric. So he has extensive years in a public utility, which the water authority is. And every member of the board has had a copy of this resume, and his appointment to the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority is on the consent agenda tonight. So with that, does anyone wish to remove any item on the consent agenda, or I will entertain a motion to approve?
Move the approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda, which we are not required to do? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and the consent agenda is approved.
Can I say something about that consent agenda? I think it's kind of interesting, maybe this is the wrong time, but I feel like some of these people might want to leave. Kind of regarding the consent agenda, that we just had a great discussion about there with Mr. Mabe's appointment, and the comments that we've heard made, with the exception of the Randolph County, friends of the Randolph County Sheriff's Department, about the last appointment, that clearly the public has some questions about, and I think one of the speakers has said that, you know, some of the comments were dismissed when I was questioning that appointment. You know, I think it's kind of telling, which I applaud you for all your homework and hard work, and finding Mr. Mabe, and somebody with all the qualifications, and vetting that person, that would do a good job representing on this board. You know, it's certainly fair to consider now, after last month, and in light of, again, the public comment, you know, how we're going to vet people for appointments that we put on these things, on these different boards and stuff, especially something as important as a policymaking board like the Health Department. So, you know, I think that's a, a pretty diverse difference right there in the way that was done. This one, we have a resume that we've all looked over, we vetted, we've talked about it, we spent, you know, a long time trying to find the right person, and the last month, you know, already questioned that, it's in the public record, so I'm not going to go through it, but, you know, it's kind of a pointed, you know, difference there, and how that was done, and how it turned out.
Yes, and I, the points have been well taken, and I think that there will be more transparency as we go through this process. And we do have, with our agenda tonight, we have a list of future board appointees that are coming open, so that is also a matter of public record, already at this time. All right. Thank you. Okay. Our first item under new business tonight. Sheriff? Glad you could join us. I don't know, we have a check here for six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents from the friends of the Randolph County Sheriff's.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry on this, I tried to make it back from Raleigh as quickly as possible. Traffic got there.
We're good, and we'll, we'll take up your recognition, Mr. Garner, next month, so, but I just wanted you to know, we, we have the checks in hand. It's not in the mail, it's in the hand.
Well, I appreciate it, and I appreciate what they do.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Presentation of our annual audit report. This will be streamed, and if a commissioner has a question, ask it. It may be that our finance officer, Will Massey, will have to repeat that question in his technology over there, so that it comes through. It might not come through the first time if we ask it from up here, so I'm making you aware of that. If it's not, they'll let us know, and we'll, we'll repeat that question. So, Will, we'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
While he's doing that, are we not going to vote on the consent agenda?
I thought we voted.
We voted.
We did. We voted.
You, you remember voting, wasn't you?
Yeah, you voted.
Okay.
You and Dan are on the same page, and asked the same question.
Yes, we voted.
You voted yes, I think.
Which brings up an interesting point. As we vote, if a commissioner does not vote, and has not been released by another, by this board, it's counted as a yes. So, it's the way things work.
Yes, Max.
I guess I did. Well, I wasn't going to vote no, so that's a bad.
Michael reminded me to speak into the mics, because there's, we're having transmission issues.
Will, do we need to take another item while y'all work through that?
Give me just another minute.
Okay. All right. Amber, I'm going to let you come on and make your report. And I will say David Carlin, who is the chairman of the board for Tourism Development Authority, is also with Amber tonight. David, glad to have you.
Thank you for your time this evening. Chairman Frye, Vice Chair Allen, Commissioners Haywood, Kidd, and McDowell. I come to you on behalf of the Randolph County Tourism Development Authority Board of Directors with a brief overview of, of some key highlights from our 2019 annual report. And you have the full report in your packet tonight for review. Nationwide, the travel and tourism industry generated 1.1 trillion dollars in domestic and international visitor spending, resulting in 179.7 billion dollars in tax revenues for federal, state, and local governments in 2019. The state of North Carolina generated 1.3 billion dollars in travel-related visitor spending, that's more than 73 million dollars per day. These revenues totaled 3.7 million dollars in state tax collections, and 2.2 million dollars in local collections. Randolph County generated 161.65 million dollars in travel-related visitor spending. Not only did we see an increase of 5.25 percent in spending from 2018, but we also had record-breaking visitation, welcoming more than 1.4 million visitors to our area. Revenues totaled 9.7 million dollars in state tax collections, and 2.62 million dollars in local tax collections. Randolph County supported 1,080 tourism direct jobs, contributing to more than 26.33 million dollars in payroll income for the county. As a result of this visitor spending, sales taxes allowed a total tax savings of 85 dollars per Randolph County resident in 2019. Our occupancy tax revenues in Randolph County reported at 1,107,825, and that was an increase of 4.66 percent from 2018's 1,058,536. These taxes are collected from our hotels, motels, bed and breakfast ends, Airbnb properties, and structures on campgrounds in Randolph County. The average occupancy at these properties was reported at 65.1 percent for the year, an increase of 1 percent from 2018's 64.4 percent. Our visitors paid an average daily rate on their room rentals at our properties of 90 dollars and eight cents, and that was a decrease of 1.3 percent from 2018's average daily rate. But from this rate charged on each room, revenues collected by Randolph County averaged to be 58 dollars and 93 cents. Each year, we survey our tourism attractions in Randolph County to evaluate their visitation records with the visitor spending that has been reported. Of the 38 attractions in our county surveyed, they reported approximately 1,321,885 visitors for the calendar year 2019. And these visitors came from New York, North Carolina, Florida, Pennsylvania, and Ohio. Within North Carolina, we had visitation from the regions of Raleigh, Durham Chapel Hill, Greensboro, Winston-Salem High Point, Charlotte, Gastonia, Concord, Asheville, Wilmington, Mount Airy, Fedville, and Fort Bragg. The collection of this data helps our organization better understand where our visitors originate from, enabling, enabling us to plan for strategic advertisement placement in the states and regions that we know are visiting our area already, to encourage return visitors for additional visitor spending. Further outreach of our tourism messaging occurs in our operation of the I-7374 Visitor Centers in Seagrove, in partnership with North Carolina DOT. We have ten part-time employees working six days a week at the visitor centers in Seagrove, northbound and southbound, and in 2019, they were able to assist 64,090 visitors to the area. And from these interactions, we were able to distribute key travel-related materials, our official Heart of North Carolina Travel Guide, the North Carolina State DOT Roadmap, and the North Carolina Travel Guide, to 50,477 of those visitors. As the official destination marketing organization representing each municipality in Randolph County, we take those occupancy tax dollars, and we reinvest into tourism marketing, communications, and destination development efforts, to bring the highest return on that investment. In 2019, we were fortunate enough to host eight media tours, consisting of digital influencers, magazine editors, bloggers, and freelance writers. Many of these journalists were from those key markets that I mentioned before, with advertisement placements. From these media tours, we saw results of more than 40 print, television, online, and media e-blasts, including a Woman's Day Magazine article that featured the Table Farmhouse Bakery and Dusty Gregson, Charlotte Magazine with cover art of Richard Petty, Garden &amp; Gun had a beautiful multi-page spread of our Seagrove pottery community. Collectively, these marketing efforts and partnerships generated a reach of 122,000 online views and 16.9 million print views. Our organization's digital presence continued to grow with more utilization of our social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, as key marketing tools. Success was found with over 17,000 social shares from our staff and followers of those platforms, by using more interactive video and images to communicate on those platforms. And my final thoughts for tonight, and for 2019, the tourism message that we share is not necessarily defined in these numbers reported to you this evening. Our marketing efforts are supported by each of our nine municipalities that possess unique attributes shining every day. Those tourism partners are the true workhorses and heroes that help us solidify our message with their commitment to hospitality. Their passion allows us to remain focused on being family-friendly, affordable, and strategically located in the heart of North Carolina. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, good job.
Amber, just, I know you're giving a report on your last full fiscal year.
Yes.
So what does 2020 look like compared to this 1.1 million in 19?
2020 is going to look significantly decreased, because there were closures in the spring. The zoo was closed for a month, our visitor centers were closed for a month and a half. Our occupancy tax has been down to about 30 to 40 percent from that 65 percent average for 2019, so our numbers are going to look significantly less.
They're going to be less than half a million dollars.
Yes.
They're going to be at 400.
And we did budget $700,000 for our 2021 budget, so we're, we're holding tight right now.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks for staying there.
And Amber, I have a question.
Yes.
Did I understand correctly, I'm sorry. Did I understand correctly that we have two visitor centers? And that other counties have one? And we are given-
185,000 dollars to operate both.
The same that others are given?
Yes, for one.
I think you heard that, Senator Craven. You knew what I was getting at there. Let's see what we can do about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready on the audit?
I'm here.
Okay. All right. Good evening, and we're anxious to hear you report, April. You have the floor.
Okay. Do you want me to try to share my screen again?
So I tell you, she didn't hear anything.
Okay. Do they see the full, the full sheet slide? Do they see the full slide or the one that has the slides? Okay, do they see the full slide now? Okay, all right. All right, so, good evening. I am happy to be here to give you the audit results from the 2020 audit. And let's move to the next slide. Okay, so, what I'd like to cover with you tonight is just briefly remind you what the role of the external auditor is. Then, I'd like to cover what we do when it comes to internal controls and identify the significant audit areas that are included as part of the audit. I'm gonna identify what the major programs were related to single audit that we performed the testing over. Then, I'll give you the results of the audit itself, and then I'll cover a couple of quick financial highlights from the financial statements themselves, and then I'll be glad to take any questions or comments. All right, so, the role of the external auditor. We do perform your audit in accordance with two sets of auditing standards. The first set is the Generally Accepted Auditing Standards of the United States. Any audit that gets conducted in the United States gets done under those standards. The second set of standards that we add are what we call the Government Auditing Standards, and those are because you're a government entity and we add those. Both of those sets of auditing centers require that we plan and perform procedures to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement, as well as looking for compliance with certain laws and regulations. Basically, what those statements mean is that we did not come in and test every single audit or every transaction that happened throughout the year, that we're actually performing what we call a risk-based audit, which means we're looking for where your financial statements are most susceptible to being materially misstated. Once we've performed all of our procedures, we are required to express an opinion on the financial statements, as well as the internal control over, we issue a report called the Internal Control over Financial Reporting, which is the report on those government auditing standards. And then finally, we issue two other opinions based on the compliance with the federal and state related to the grant dollars that you administer from the federal and state government. And an additional audit requirement is that we communicate certain things to you that may have come to light during the audit. And we do that in two ways. One is this presentation tonight, as well as a letter that will accompany your financial statements. The types of things covered are if there were significant changes in accounting policies. We identify what the significant estimates are in your financial statements, as those are based on management's judgment, as well as some external factors that are available at the time that may result differently in the future as they're an estimate. And then finally, if any journal entries are identified as a result of our procedures, we report those to you in that letter as well. All right, so, for internal controls, while we don't actually opine on your internal controls, we are required to review those and report deficiencies noted as a result of that review. What we do is we identify and determine what the significant transaction cycles are. We obtain an understanding. We actually get the policies and procedures. And then we walk through a test of one transaction from the initiation of that transaction all the way through how it's recorded and ultimately reported in the financial statements. From there, we can decide if we want to test and rely upon internal controls as a part of our testing to determine if your financial statements are free from those material misstatements. We do test and rely upon internal controls on a rotational basis for the county audit, and those transaction cycles are your payroll and your cash disbursements transaction cycles. The standards also require us to do certain things as a result of the journal entries that occur. What we get is what we call a data dump of all journal entries that occur throughout the year. And then we put that into a system and mine it for unusual transactions, you know, ones that look more unsuspicious. And then we'll pull all those journal entries, look at the supporting documentation, make sure they've got the proper review and approval, and that the proper accounts were used, and that the journal entry itself makes sense. Also, related to internal controls, we're required to look at certain things related to information technology controls, things that protect the financial system. We issue out a questionnaire, and then we look and reviews for general computer controls. Do users of the system, financial system, are they limited to those that need to have access? You know, is it password protected, et cetera? Is the actual physical security of the system appropriate? And then finally, we are required to test internal controls related to the single audit, which is the audit over the federal and state dollars that the county receives and administers. We do, we obtain the monitoring reports from the agencies that are also overlooking the administration, as well as looking and testing the action controls over how you administer those funds. Okay, so, for the significant audit areas, as I mentioned, we do a risk-based audit, meaning that we're gonna focus and look for where your financial statements are free or most susceptible to being materially misstated, and then focus on to ensure that they're not materially misstated. And these are the audit areas that we spend time testing what we call substantively, which means that we're either confirming them with a third party. We are testing them analytically, looking at predictive or relationship analytics to ensure that the balances make sense. And if we have to, we'll dig in and do a test of details where we're actually pulling supporting documentation, a sample of documentation, and looking to make sure it's substantiated. So, for the single audit, I did identify here what the major programs were that we tested. You'll see that there were quite a few for the federal side, the CARES Act, Medicaid, child support enforcement, foster care and adoption, as well as a program called WIC, which is the Supplemental Nutritional Programs for Women, Infants, and Children. And then on the state side, we tested the Public School Building Capital Fund, which is also commonly known as the lottery funds. And then there's cross-cutting, which has to do with the administrative dollars for a lot of the federal funds that get spent. And what we're doing is we're testing those, each of those programs for up to 14 different compliance requirements based on the program, looking for whether you have administered appropriately those required compliance requirements. All right, so, for the audit results, I am happy to report that we have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, as well as an unmodified opinion for the GAS, commonly known as the Yellow Book Opinion. We have not yet issued the opinions for the federal and state single audit. We are in the final review stages of that testing. I'll find opinions for those later this week. For internal controls, I am happy to report, and for the unmodified, I know it doesn't sound glamorous, but that is the opinion that the county wants. That's also known as a clean opinion. It is the highest level of assurance that we can give you as an audit firm that your financial statements are free from those material misstatements that we were looking for. So, that is the best results that you can get. For internal controls, I am also happy to report that there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses identified from our review of those controls for single audit. So far, there, and I don't anticipate anymore, there's only one finding issued related to Medicaid. It is a non-material, non-compliance finding. Basically, there were some documentation issues identified as a result of that testing. This is the most common finding amongst counties administering the Medicaid eligibility. There's quite a bit of documentation and quite a bit of volume, as you can imagine, over that eligibility determinations that are made. And then for the required communications, this is the letter that I mentioned will accompany your financial statements. The highlights of that letter is that there were no significant changes in accounting policies. Your estimates are the same significant estimates that were there last year. Your allowance for doubtful accounts, the depreciation based on the estimated useful lives of your capital assets, your OPEB, which is your other post-employment benefits, or the health insurance for your retirees, your elders and Leosa and ROD pension plans, your estimate to close, the closure costs related to the landfill, and your risk management, which is your self-insurance. And then finally, there were no journal entries identified as a result of the audit procedures, which means that Will and Suzanne and their team is properly capturing all the activities, the financial activity of the county throughout the year. All right, so, now I'm gonna move on to some financial results. I've just got a couple of slides here with some very high-level information that I pulled from the financial statements. This first one is just taking a look at your general fund. The board sets out a budget for the year, and this is just to report how the county performed against that budget. Your revenues in total for the general fund beat the budget by 200 or 2.7 million. The large majority of that increase is from your property tax and your sales tax beating the budget. And that's just, you know, even though COVID hit in 2020, the majority of this property tax and Avalon tax had already been collected for the year, and then sales tax was performing so well that it still beat budget, even if the last three months declined. And then your expenditures, you'll see, were also under budget, which is direction you want to have. But you can see it was under budget by 11.3 million, and that's just simply as COVID hit, the departments operated not at full capacity, and it just decreased your expenses. I'm sure that some, that that was the impact. And then, so, if you take a look at the combination of being over budget and your revenues and under budget and your expenses, combined with the fact that the county had already approved the use of 7.6 million of fund balance in its final budget, the county was actually able to add back 8 million to total fund balance. And so, what I would like to do is take you to the next slide to show you how you performed against the policy when it comes to fund balance. So, the board has a policy set to maintain at least a minimum of 20% of the expenditures in the unassigned fund balance category for the general fund. And so, you'll see reflected here in 2019 and 2020, you ended up with 24% of your fund balance in unassigned. And I'd like to remind you the reason why. It's the same numbers. Anything over 24% gets put into the capital improvement assigned category. And so, that's where you'll see the majority of that amount that I just mentioned, the 8 million on the previous slide that got put back to fund balance. 6 million of it was reassigned to the capital improvement plan. All right, so, this is just a high-level snapshot of the county's capital assets or fixed assets. So, for 2020, you can see that it increased to 94 million from 81 million. And you had $17.4 million spent in capital outlay. You had projects such as the detention center, the Trinity Middle School, the Asheville High School addition, as well as you completed some projects related to the new convenience sites for Trinity and Randleman. You also had a renovation project for North Gate and a common complex, which relocates some of your probation and parole and board of elections. And then, all of that was offset by some depreciation of about 4 million. All right, and this last financial slide is looking at a snapshot of your long-term debt. And you'll see that it is now at 141 million in the current year. The county did issue about $68 million in new debt. This was in accordance with the board's capital improvement plan. And then you were able to pay down about 10.2 million during the year. And that is all that I had for you tonight. I'll be glad to take any questions or comments.
Do I have a question? Will, anything you wanna say about the audit report and how that, the audit is, the audit is very important, as you can imagine, to this hospital, I mean, to this county and our ability to manage our debt and to take care of our needs, and in particular right now, dealing with the saving of our hospital and being a part of that. And this audit report was necessary for our application to the Local Government Commission. So, and I think that the findings in this audit will support our application for the funds to keep our hospital open.
I'd just like to make the comment that the programs that she mentioned, that they had to do for the single audit, most of those were with DSS or Health Department. You know what they've been going through this year, and so, fitting in audit procedures was probably the last thing they wanted to do, but they did it anyway. So, thanks to them for moving the audit along, because we were trying to expedite everything to be in place to move forward with the hospital loan.
Any questions or comments from Commissioners?
I mean, I'm just amazed at the amount of work that goes into these statements, and I appreciate the work that Will and staff and the other folks through the departments, the financial folks there that contribute to it. And thank you for, Cherry Beckett, for their work that they do. And it's just, if you ever looked at that report, it's just massive numbers of schedules and whatnot. That's the reason I never did do much with governmental accounting. Now, that fund accounting is a lot of fun, so...
And that's why some accountants retire.
Is that why they retired? Yeah. But I think Will will be, is to be congratulated with his staff for the work that they do, because it is impressive when you take a look at all that the county has to do.
Yes. I'll agree with that. I mean, there's, for those folks that have never seen one of these massive audit reports and all the legalese and everything that goes into them, it is a specialized industry at this time in our year. And it's amazing to see all that put together. It really takes a lot of effort, and it is a massive undertaking. Do I have a motion to approve the, to receive the audit report?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second. Now, the questions or discussion. Those in favor will say aye. Those no, and it is approved. Thank you, Will. Thank you very much, April.
Thanks.
All right. Tracy? You have about three agenda items in a row here, Tracy.
Three agenda items, but I promise to be very, very quick unless you guys have extensive questions. I have to say, every time that I have the opportunity to speak with someone with Randolph County leadership, it reinforces that Randolph County, since I've came, I've had this impression, and all of you have only made sure that that was true, that Randolph County certainly cares about the widows and the orphans in the community, that you care for your own, and that you are community-minded. And I am fortunate just to be a part of Randolph County leadership. We've had so many unforeseen tragedies this year, and one thing that I can tell you is that unforeseen tragedies don't change the strengths or challenges in an agency or an organization, but they certainly illuminate it. They put that flashlight on what you do well and what you need to shore up. And today, I'm here to ask for two additions to the county classification plan. I'm here to ask that we include an attorney-to-position to the county's classification plan. We do not currently have that position in our plan. I'm also asking for an Assistant Director for Department of Social Services. I have found through everything going on with our court system, we cannot afford to do without our attorney. The lives and care of children who are abused and adults who are abused depends too much on that position. And our current attorney has many years of experience in Department of Social Services, and we have recently lost an attorney, so she is winging it single-handedly. And this year, although lots of things are down, we hear in the news all the time about what's going on with child welfare and how families are at home and how children are learning at home. And one thing that we haven't really talked about, because there's so much other things happening, is the opioid addiction is still very alive and well. And we are seeing that in our work and in the numbers that are increased for children who are abused and disabled and need our help. So, the positions that I'm asking to be reclassified, assist, to be added to the county classification plan, assist us with making sure that we shore up our internal controls, that we increase the quality of services that we are providing. I'm not requesting any additional money, and I'm not requesting to add any additional positions. I'm simply asking that we add those two positions to the county classification plan. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Tracy, on the Assistant Director position, we've sort of looked at Richard in that, in that position, or considered him that, but by DHHS rules, he's not qualified to hold that position. But by DHHS rules, he's not qualified to hold that position.
So I believe what the state health res- Health Human Services Agency, Human Resources, said is that he's not qualified for the director position. For the assistant director position, he is absolutely qualified. And I put in my memo that my vision, my vision for Department of Social Services is to have an assistant director over operations. That includes the budget, that includes IT, that includes lots of things in the agency. And also an assistant director for services. That includes social work, that includes child welfare, that includes foster care. So those two positions together would, like I say, make sure that we are shoring up the internal controls of the agency. Does that answer your question?
That answers my question.
I guess the reason he's not qualified is because he doesn't have a social work background. Or is that correct?
So what the state asks for is that someone who is a Department of Social Services director has child welfare supervision experience. Because as we look across the nation, most of the things that end up in the paper are from children who were abused and we didn't know or didn't do something correctly. So they asked that the director have direct experience with social work services.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have any question about what she's asking for at all. It's very needed. For those folks that don't know what they go through, and I'm a liaison from this board and and on on their their committee, but I I can tell you, I don't know how these people do the job they do, especially in this last year with all that's going on. Tracy and her group are absolutely professionals and are trying to do the best job they can under the circumstances. And and these these requirements here are again to help shore up operations so that some of the questions that come under the audit as far as procedural can be dealt dealt with and addressed. And that's what they're trying to do is make sure that all these these things that are required are handled in house in the way it should be done. And they they they're just under a lot of lot of pressure. And I can say unequivocally, they're doing yeoman work. And I too, Richard does a great, great job and nobody's questioning what he does or how he's.
I didn't mean that at all. I mean, I it was it's a formality of of the title.
Clarify.
To clarify.
But it's it's I can't I can't say enough about how good these people are doing the job they're doing under the circumstances that they're under. Absolutely.
Without objection, I'll I'm going to suggest we consider C and D together, that those both are adding positions to the county classification plan. Doesn't require any funding. So do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second that we add the title of attorney two and the title of assistant DSS director to the county classification plan. Further questions or discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and they are so moved. Next is item E, which has to do with our memorandum of understanding.
That's true. The memorandum memorandum of understanding has changed since two thousand and eighteen. I believe that Randolph County stood on their decided what they were going to do and stood on how they felt about the MOU. Many county departments of social services objected in two thousand and eighteen because there were twenty seven performance measures. And departments of social services, in looking at those performance measures, knew that there were many of those measures that we had no control over, that we didn't know if we could accomplish those or not because they we had other partners in the community that we had to work with. So all of those were not under our control. But before you today, this MOU has, what did I say, sixteen?
Twelve, no, sixteen.
Sixteen performance measures. Twelve of those are the responsibility of Department of Social Services. And also in your packet, I've put some of the outcomes that Department of Social Services has done with those performance measures to show you how we have performed. Also, in the memo, I included information about a public facing dashboard that we are going to see in two thousand twenty one, where these performance measures will be public facing. And anybody with access to a computer will be able to look up how any of the one hundred counties in North Carolina are doing, including Randolph County. They'll be able to compare our progress and our how we're doing and compare it to other counties. I have seen the pilot of the dashboard. It certainly is not ready yet. I expect it to be ready around July of two thousand twenty one. And it looks clear, it looks understandable. If you look at it, you can tell exactly how many food nutrition services applications that a county processed and how many of those were timely and how many were untimely. You can look and see for foster youth, how many of those were visited each month and if those visits met the state performance measures. So this dashboard is upcoming. You will hear more from me about that. Hopefully, we'll be able to see what that looks like. And I will share our county's progress again. But before you is the MOU for this year. It starts in January two thousand twenty one and it goes through the end of June two thousand twenty two.
Tracy, and and for the public, when this memorandum of understanding matter came up three years ago, of the one hundred counties in North Carolina, Randolph and Yadkin County refused to sign. And as Tracy's mentioned, there was like twenty seven points or issues that we would be graded on. Some we had nothing to do with, no control over, et cetera. So our refusing got somebody's attention and and those requirements were reduced.
We enacted change and that felt really, really good. And the performance measures here, they make sense. We can count them, the state can count them. So we can count what we have, what our county is against what the state has counted. So we can verify that their numbers are correct.
So you you might note that the sixteen, si- twelve are responsible of DSS.
That's correct.
The four are child support measures.
Yes.
Who does those if we don't?
Our our child support.
Yeah, but you don't include those when you say of the twelve, we're all we're we meet or exceed eleven of them already.
Yes.
So what about the other four?
So I think they're doing pretty well. I have to be honest. I try and stay in my lane. I don't know how child support is doing on their performance measures.
I guess your child support is not under social services, so.
They are not under social services, so that's not under purview of my control.
That's what I, yes. Who is responsible for doing that? I mean, who within your office?
So nobody in our office does child support. That is outside of Department of Social Services.
The twelve is what we're responsible for.
The twelve is what we're responsible for.
And we already meet or exceed eleven of those and the twelve we're working on.
That's correct. Now, child support is still in Randolph County. We have a child support agency here. Again, I don't know how they're doing with their four because I try and pay attention to my twelve.
Right. All right, other questions or discussions? Do I have a motion to approve the or to accept the MOU?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between DHHS State and Randolph County.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you. All right, item F, our reappraisal cycle schedule.
Good evening and thank you for letting me come before the board tonight. The reason I'm here is I'm proposing the advancement of the reappraisal cycle from a six year cycle to a four year cycle. Randolph County's last reappraisal was in two thousand nineteen and the advancement would move the next reappraisal effective date, excuse me, from one one twenty five to one one twenty three. The North Carolina general statutes requires that a county do a countywide reappraisal at least every eight years. But the statute also allows that the local county board of commissioners through resolutions can advance that reappraisal cycle. So what I'd like to present tonight is why I would like to move to a a four year reappraisal cycle. And the reason for that. Okay. The reason for that is to be able to capture the change in the market in a more, if whether it's positive or negative, but to capture it in a more timely manner. The realis- the residential properties in the county are seem to be booming with sales, new construction. But also on the other end, the commercial properties, the income producing properties, they have seen a negative impact from this COVID virus over the last year. But the North Carolina general statutes lays out what a county, how a county can adjust values in a non reappraisal year. And one of those is inflation, deflation, or other economic conditions affecting the county in general. Well, this COVID has not only affected Randolph County, but the world wide. So we cannot accurately adjust for those changes in a non reappraisal year. So we would like to be able to advance it so that we can take a quicker look at the changes happening. Another reason for a an advancement would be to create uniformity between the different types of properties. Real property, the real estate, is only appraised with a reappraisal cycle. That value stays the same. The depreciation on the property, whether it's depreciation or appreciation, stays the same for that reappraisal cycle. Whereas personal property, the public services and registered motor vehicles, they are assessed and appraised annually. So there is a difference in that depreciation cycle or appreciation cycle between the different types of properties. And we would like to create equity and uniformity between all types of properties. Another reason is the North Carolina Department of Revenue is recommending a four year cycles for counties. And it's also a part of the the IWO, which is International Assessing Officers, is recommending that counties go to a four year cycle so that we can recognize change in our county. But also in General Statute one oh five two eighty six, they have added a mandate that at any time a reappraisal, the sales ratio, that's the difference between the assessed value and the sales ratio of the sale of the property, falls less than eighty five percent or greater than a hundred and fifteen percent, a reappraisal should be done within a two year cycle. This come about back in the Great Recession in two thousand seven and two thousand eight, when the real estate market bottomed out on properties and properties were being over assessed. So this was added to the general statutes to help with that. Also, public utilities are assessed annually by the Department of Revenue. They are assessed at a hundred percent of their their value. But part of the statute says that on the first, fourth, or seventh year of reappraisal cycle, the public service values can be adjusted or reduced if the weighted ratio of real and personal property falls below ninety percent. So and with that, you can see that three of the public service companies are part of our top ten tax top ten assessments in the Randolph County. So that could negatively affect the revenues for the county if these values were adjusted.
Let me just add.
Yes.
This this issue here, several years ago, Duke Energy sued Guilford County.
That is correct.
Over this matter.
Yes.
Because the public, it was valued every some eight years, four to eight years. These public utilities were valued every single year.
Every year, and there's where the inequity was.
The courts ruled in favor of Duke Energy.
That is correct.
That's why this this issue comes up. So if we fall below those ratios that she's showing here, we have to give tax relief to those public utilities.
That is correct. With their values would have to be reduced.
And they're in our top five or six.
Yes, they rank fourth, fifth, and sixth in our top ten taxpayers.
That was a main factor when we went from eight to six.
That is correct.
That avoided giving.
That avoided the seventh year, yes.
In that seventh year.
Yes.
And now we got the fourth year.
Yes. Our current ratio, you can see with, for our two thousand and nineteen reappraisal, our sales ratio was ninety nine point five percent. But that was using two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen sales. So those years was weighted. But if you take out and just look at two thousand and eighteen sales, our sales ratio on those was ninety five point four four percent. What we're seeing with our two thousand and nineteen sales was ninety one point three percent. So there is a difference of four point four percent. Our sales in two thousand twenty, our sales ratio is down to eighty seven point ninety percent. That's a difference of three point forty percent. If I use three point five percent over the next couple of years, you can see by two thousand, excuse me, two thousand twenty three, our sales ratio, I could estimate it being at around eighty one percent. So we're right there on that marginal line for public utilities and and also for the DOT standards. More more frequent reappraisals creates a better product in general. We're not use, we're not losing the knowledge between the cycles. We see a problem, but we have to hold it for six years. Or we see something that needs to be changed in our schedule of values. We can't change it till the next reappraisal. That could be six years. So this way, we can remember what went wrong and we're able to fix it quicker. It's more efficient use of the staff. We do an in-house reappraisal. The staff is there, they're available, they're constantly working on it. They knows what's happening so they can move with the information. The there are six counties that we normally compare ourselves with in our state for population and and parcel wise. Those are Alamance, Cabarrus, Catawba, Hornet, Ardell, and Pitt. And out of those six counties, five of those counties are already on a a four year reappraisal. Statewide, there are thirty six counties on a four year cycle, eleven counties on a five year cycle, six counties on a six year cycle. And there is still forty seven counties left on an eight year cycle. That eight year cycle in forty seven counties, I relate that back to the smaller mountain counties and the eastern counties where they're small counties. They don't have the staff, they don't have that much change in their county. So they don't need a reappraisal, but maybe every eight years because the ratio is staying steady. It reduces the sticker shock for taxpayers. It keeps the taxpayers aware of what's happening in the county, what's happening in the market. And it keeps their values realistic to what the the true market is. Another advantage is being able to provide accurate information to other county departments. Another advantage is being able to provide accurate information to other county departments and outside agencies. There is a lot of departments, there's a lot of agencies that depend on our information. And when our information, our assessment starts getting 80% away from that true market value, then our information becomes less dependable. And folks use our assessed values. That's a quick overview, and I'll be glad to take any questions that you would have.
And I'll just add one more comment. This ratio that we're looking at, the ratios, it comes from our own registered deeds office.
It comes from the market in our county, yes, sir. It's the sales in our county.
For round numbers, we have a, we have a house on the tax records at $90,000 and it sells for 100. So our sales assessment ratio is 10%.
It's off 10%, right. And our statute says that we are to assess that true market value. So we lose that true market value during those reappraisal cycles.
All right. Questions?
I will say that I've talked to some young property owners. A lot of people are young compared to me these days, but anyway. I also talked to some real estate agents who work with commercial, and they all felt like it was a good idea.
And I think they would agree. For real estate agencies, if they're trying to list a property and they give an amount or they get a private appraisal and it comes out at an amount, and then they look at the assessed value, they expect those to be close. And when we get in this farther out from the cycle, we're not there and it causes a lot of questions.
There was just a quick question about the additional, is there any additional cost of moving from a six-year cycle to a four-year cycle?
No, it just advances the cost from the six-year to the four-year. Remember that.
So you're basically, I mean, you're basically doing.
We're doing the work now. It's just moving the cost of the mailing, the advertise, all of that, just the PR part of it.
Okay. Questions, comments? I just see, I see several positive aspects of this, necessarily within the tax department, but other, other agencies that look into this as well or depend on this. So there's a lot of, a lot of give and take. And also, the values that you come up with for our, our discussions on budgeting and this type of thing, it's all going to even out over, over a period of time anyway. So a more accurate four-year cycle is more appropriate than a six or eight.
In my opinion, yes, sir.
Comments? What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, as I say, there's a lot of reasons why I think this makes sense to do. I think you'll find more and more counties, especially with, with housing and, housing and real estate cost or pricing going up and everything. I think you're going to find a lot of counties moving to a, off of an eight to a six and a six to a four. But I think, I think this is a trend that's going to occur, in my opinion, not just here but other places as well. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the presentation.
Have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no? All right.
Thank you for your support and confidence.
Thank you, David. Thank you for your patience tonight. All right, Amy. Closing another unnamed road here.
Yeah, I got another one. It's kind of weird. I can, you can go a couple of years without one and then we have two back-to-back, so. Basically, I received a request to close an unnamed street. This one appears never to have been built, even as a dirt road. It appears to have never been built at all. The request was submitted by a Larry McElrath. The property on one side of that unnamed street is owned by his mother. He has power of attorney for her. And the property on the other side is owned by another lady that he has spoke, he has informed me that he has spoken with. We will, of course, be mailing her notice of anything you decide, if you decide to move forward. But he is asking that this unnamed street be closed because he said it is his plan to build a house there and the way the property lays that, where that street is, is really the best place for its driveway. So that's, that's the reason for his request. The procedure for closing a public road or easement, even when it has never been built, is essentially governed by North Carolina general statute 153A241. There is another statute for roads that have never been built, but it's almost unusable because of what it requires. It requires that the original dedicator sign off on the closing. And most of the time, when the road's never been built, the original dedicator was usually a developer who has gone out of business or is not, not able to be located. It's almost, it's almost an unusable statute, so.
And this goes back to 1953.
It does, yes, sir.
There's been no road there.
There's no road there.
For 67 years.
Right. And I drove out and looked at it to see, you know, if, if it looked like it had ever been used, and it, it does not appear to be. And I, I don't really know why it would have been because it does not connect to another road. It would have been a little dead-end section. If you look at the survey, you can, you can see that. But the procedure for closing the public road or easement, we're looking at North Carolina general statute 153A241. And the first step is that you would adopt a resolution declaring your intent to close the road and calling for a public hearing on the matter. I then publish the notice of that public hearing once a week for three consecutive weeks. I have to send a copy of the resolution by registered certified mail to any owner of property adjoining that road who did not join in the request. And a notice of the closing and public hearing will have to be posted in at least two places along the non-existent road, which is a little awkward, but we have to do it. At the public hearing, interested people are allowed to voice their views on whether the closing is detrimental to the public interest or to individual property rights. And after the public hearing, if you're satisfied that closing that portion of the road does not, is not detrimental to public interest and does not deprive any individual of access to their property, then you can adopt an order closing the road and a certified copy of that order is filed at the registered deeds office and that takes care of it. And the statute basically states that the way the property is divided is you just kind of split the road down the middle and it goes to the property owners on either side. So if you are willing to consider closing this unnamed street, as shown on the survey that I, that I attached for you, then I would ask that you adopt the attached resolution announcing your intent to consider closing the street and setting the public hearing on the matter for your meeting on February 1st.
Is there another property owner other than Mr. McElrath?
Well, there is a property owner right on the other side of that street, yes, sir. Mr. McElrath stated to me that she is in complete agreement with this. And if you look at the survey, I think I will also have to notify, if you look at how the, the road ends at property owned by SHJ Capital LLC, I feel like I would have to notify them as well because they do adjoin the road. I don't believe that this is how they would access their property because I think their property actually fronts on a much larger road.
It'd have to be a lot of work before the state would take that road over anyhow.
Yeah, yes, sir. So I will be sending certified letters to both of those property owners.
But what we're asking to do is just to hold a public hearing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, the statute requires, the statute requires that when you set the public hearing, that you also adopt this resolution stating that you intend to close the street. I don't know why that's how that statute is written because you, of course, I mean, you did it last month. You have complete control not to close the street, just even when you've adopted this resolution. It's simply a resolution that announces to the general public that you may intend to close the street. So.
The resolution, in effect, is to set a public hearing for 6:00 PM on February 1st, 2021.
Yes, correct.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, David. That was your, Commissioner Smith's initiative on food resiliency. And that came at our board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and a lot of counties are doing this. I'll encourage to do so.
Just to give a little background, each year, the president of the Association of North Carolina Association of County Commissioners generally has a presidential initiative, and in the past, it's been displaced to use. I think, hope you were a part of that. Children's issues, opioid addiction, and this year, President Ronnie Smith from Martin County has chosen food system resiliency. And basically, what food system resiliency is, is access to food is a basic human need and a critical component for a healthy society. Food system resilience can be defined as capacity over time of a food system to provide sufficient, acceptable, and accessible food to all in the face of various and unforeseen disturbances. When people who are food insecure, meaning they lack access to high-quality and affordable food to sustain a healthy lifestyle, it has wide impacts on the community. People who are food insecure are disproportionately affected by diet sensitive chronic diseases such as diabetes and high blood pressure. And according to research, food insecurity is also linked to many adverse effects of overall health. Food security can be particularly harmful for children who can experience social, emotional, and detrimental side effects due to lack of nutrition. The implications of food insecurity are complex, interconnected, and far-reaching. The county's role in this food systems, basically counties are extensively involved in addressing food insecurity, particularly through their Departments of Social Services, Public Health, which also administers food nutrition programs for families in need of assistance, public school systems that distribute meals to students, and cooperative extensions, which are in every county, provide research-based knowledge and educational programs enabling people to make practical decisions, improve their quality of life. There are many access, many aspects of the food delivery system that counties directly impact and influence. Ensuring all citizens have access to high-quality, affordable food contributes to the physical, mental, and societal health of the community. Counties can work directly with the food providers, create pathways for partnerships and innovative solutions to increase the food cultivation and distribution, and can provide financial, technical, and other in-kind support for initiatives that are supporting increased access to food systems. All these efforts can be combined to build one foods, to build food system resiliency. So this task force basically has been meeting for a couple, I guess we have a fourth meeting here in January, and they're requesting that we adopt a resolution. I think I've seen it's been adopted by Washington County, also Brunsford County at this point. And it's, I'm not going to take time to read the resolution, but it is in the packet. But basically Randolph is about, I think, is listed in the county map book at like 14% food insecure, but with a COVID-19, that's probably going to be much, much higher. So where, and Randolph, we're not the worst in the state, but we're certainly kind of in the middle. But where I have some excitement is taking, and basically my motto with this is getting the right food to the right place at the right time. And what we're discovering, at least up to this point, has been distribution is an issue. But also, this is an opportunity through Ag Extension and those folks to link up producers with the distribution to the folks that need it, the food banks and others. So I've worked a little bit with Kenny Sharon and his new horticulture agent there. She's familiar with food systems, Annie Mills. And so hopefully we can maybe get some sort of food assessment within the county and address these food resiliency issues from producer all the way through to the consumer.
Tracy, I know this morning on the crisis management team call, you mentioned food insecurity that some of the children that y'all are dealing with. I don't know if you want to make any comment on that.
I certainly agree. I read the resolution and I believe.
Come to the mic, please.
Thank you.
It is a startling fact. I believe we have about 20% of the children in Randolph County who are living under the poverty level. And those homes are food insecure homes. So I agree that food is a basic need that they, you know, they should have, and we should support them in having food. I don't know what the solution is, but I certainly would join with you in supporting whatever we can to make sure that the youth in our community and our families do get food.
What we're hoping to do from the task force is to set up models that counties can implement kind of globally within their county so that, that it can be utilized, types of models and programs, and also to share what other counties are doing that has been successful. So it's kind of a sharing and trying to do some modeling on what, how to address this issue. The pandemic's made it a little bit more to the forefront, but it's, it's kind of unusual when we're looking at a lot of the maps where the most food insecure folks are, are down east.
Right.
And it's kind of ironic that that is probably the most fertile land in the state, and yet folks there are food insecure. So we're not in the worst conditions, but we're certainly not in the best either. So it's something that we can't address.
Let me know if I can do something to help.
Okay, all right.
Could I ask a question, by the way? It's whether you, I don't know if we can answer it or not, but are there pockets in Randolph County or is it basically all over the county or, or, I don't know if we can answer that or not. I was just curious.
Commissioner McDowell, I really do not know the answer to where geographically they are. I would say they're throughout our community, not just in the rural. You know, as you know, many of our city schoolchildren are on a higher percentage of on free and reduced lunch. So I can't say, I just don't know the answer.
Just quickly, I'm not trying to answer that for you. Certainly you're way smarter than I am. We've already stopped. But I know, if I was going to see if Dr. Genie was still here, Ashboro's proper, not because it's my district, but certainly is a big pocket of that, Commissioner, because of the statistics, she said on the percentage of free and reduced lunch in the county, in the city system is 74, 75%. And I can't remember the county number, but it's, do you know that one?
I don't know what the.
And certainly that's a, there's a correlation there. So there's a, definitely population-wise, but I would assume also, you know, there's a chunk in Archdale Trinity area as well. And if you have the rural piece that you find like in eastern North Carolina, it's not heavily populated. So just across.
Kind of statewide, it's both. I mean, you've got urban areas that you have food insecurity, but y'all have a lot of rural areas. And the rural areas is where the distribution, getting the food there through the food banks and food pantries. One thing I did learn, it's interesting that right now, the food banks, usually it's the proteins, it's the meats, and it's the fresh vegetables that they're having an issue with. But now because of the pandemic, a lot of the food drives are not taking place, so they don't have the canned foods. And you usually think that's what they usually have the most of. So it's a little bit an unusual situation where it's turned upside down a little bit. But I think throughout the state, it seems to be, you know, each county has a little bit different issue, whether it be an urban county or rural county.
I know when I first came on this board, or first couple of years or so, the health. the health folks told me that of the one hundred counties, Randolph County had the fewest number of students on free or subsidized meals in the state of North Carolina. And look where we are now.
Yeah, I was looking at that heat map it did on the, from the site that you referenced or the resolution references, it was just kind of a colored map. You know, it was, it does seem to be a distribution thing because you've got some, like our area that throws in Greensboro up on Winston-Salem. You know, it's, I mean, even though we're considered rural, we're kind of in a little urban. And it was a lot lighter than just some of those less partially populated counties down east. Obviously, it's like a distribution thing.
That's what, that's what we're finding. But there's other things I'm sure we're looking at. They're kind of focusing on distribution at this point, but we'll get to other things later on.
You make a motion.
I have to ask a question real quick. I got to ask this.
Let's have a second to the motion. Okay, all right. Have a second to the motion. All right, have a motion and a second. Okay, Commissioner Kidd.
Just, and looking at the resolution and writing and everything, of course, I did look at, looked at the numbers and everything, and I agree with it. And of course, you know, with my relationship with Ashborough City Schools, I hear a lot of conversation about the food distribution and, you know, whatever, and all the food, the meals that they've delivered, both systems. You know, and even March apartment, and over the, during the pandemic, you know, to see that effort to get food in the hands of people who need it, you know, desperately is to be committed, certainly. But I was just kind of looking over, one of the big things that jumped out to me was that, you know, especially the child food insecurity rate is a significant number. And then, due to the pandemic, it's jumped to, I mean, what is that, a ten-point difference almost? And whatever, I mean, I can't help but ask this. You know what I'm going to ask is, it seems to me that if we backed off of this ridiculous government over response to the pandemic, because the pandemic didn't cause the problem, the government's response to the pandemic called the problem. So I would just like to add a line saying, why don't we roll back some of these ridiculous regulations and open up the economy so that people can go back to work and feed their children? But I don't know if you want to help word that or not.
Well, this is... This is a model.
I understand it's a model. I just want to point out that a major problem in children being able to eat during this pandemic is the parents can't work. I mean, there's a lady here tonight that owned a beauty salon who wasn't able to work for two months, literally, because of the governor's orders. I mean, if that's a single-family home, which that one's not, thank God, you know, how are you going to tell a mom, hey, we need to see what we can do to help feed your kids but you can't work for two months? I mean, I just want to make that point.
Well, we can bring that back as a separate item.
Okay, all right. But I mean, I just, it's an immediate fix if mom and dad can go back to work. And I agree, we need to work on distribution and get hands in the food, food in the hands of people who need it. But an immediate fix is, mom and dad can go back to work. And I know we can affect that, but I'd like to ask the governor and the task force to consider asking the governor that, anyway. But you can pass along my comments.
I'll pass along the comments. We meet in three weeks, I think it is.
All right. Further discussion, good points. Those in favor, say aye. Those no? Okay. Hal, do you have anything? I want to make just two comments. Issues are still out there relative to our hospital. That bankruptcy process is not moving along very fast. The hospital is still in bankruptcy. We were hoping to make the LGC this month. We obviously aren't doing that. We probably, by now, are not going to make February. We don't know. I'll tell you, I sent out a little text or email, sort of some things that took place with the hospital, but on the Wednesday before Christmas, and at lunchtime on that Wednesday, I got a phone call from Louis Robeshow telling me that in the next two or three minutes, I would be getting an email from him with a letter with questions for UNC that needed to be answered before we could finish the application. And that was lunchtime on Wednesday. The county's going to be closed at five o'clock that day through the next Monday. We put those questions on my email address, sent it to Chris Ellington, and at four o'clock that afternoon, we had all the answers. So the county is responding, we're doing what's asked of us. There's still issues. We did get a request for some of the CARES Act money that was sent to the county for the hospital. There are some issues in there that do not qualify for CARES Act funding. So I'm just telling you, those things are moving. County is doing our part. The feasibility study, we got a letter here from VMG Health out of Dallas, Texas, who is doing the feasibility study for the hospital. And this is an update, sort of a progress report. And towards the end, it says that they had estimated their fees at about ninety-five thousand dollars. Right now, through mid-December, that's looking at a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and notes this could be higher if there are other complications. So that's, we're not paying that, but all these things are continuing to add up. So, but the county is responding, is what I'm saying to you, on what's required of us, what we need to do. And we can't go to the LGC until these issues are resolved. So just making that. And also, we are working on, constantly, we have been for the last few weeks, on compensation for our employees who are sent home, not because they're sick, but because somebody else around them is sick. And we're looking at those plans relative to compensation for those employees. I just want y'all to know that that is a working process. And we've already addressed one employee, and now we have some others. But we're trying to, we have added to the COVID allotted hours from eighty to a hundred and sixty. So we doubled those hours for the employees already. So just want you to know that we're dealing with that to make sure our employees, when they're sick, that's one thing. When they have to go home because somebody else is sick, then that creates another issue. So I just wanted to make y'all aware of those two things, and we're working on it daily. All right, we have a closed session tonight. Ask Commissioner Allen to read that. But we, it's possible that it is a economic development closed session. Our economic development folks are here, deals with a project in Archdale. And it's possible that we could have some action after the closed session. So, and if it is, it'll be publicized, but if you want to stay, you can. I don't have any idea how long this will take, but it is an economic development project. And that's why we are going into closed session under a lot, allowed North Carolina General Statutes.
I move we enter to closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4 to discuss matters relating to location, expansion of industries, or other business in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? And we are in closed session. Thank you.